I think this is now, yep.
Okay.
I have that at 7:15. We'll now call this meeting to order. First thing, I'm going to ask that our county administrator, Mr. Meadows, if you would lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
If you're able, please stand for a moment of silence and then I'll lead everyone in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Chair Blevins is making her way down to the front. She'll be here in just a minute.
Deputy Parks, if you'll please come forward. Deputy Parks, I am presenting you a letter of commendation to Deputy Stephen E. Parks. The Montgomery County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Montgomery County School Resource Officer Deputy Stephen E. Parks for his life-saving actions on January 31st, 2023. We, the Montgomery Board of Supervisors, wish to thank Deputy Parks for his immediate response to an incident at Auburn Middle School that resulted in saving a child's life. Due to his quick response by administering the Heimlich maneuver and CPR, a 12-year-old child is with his family today. Our board has always valued public safety in our community. We believe school resource officers serve a significant and worthwhile purpose in our schools. We know each school resource officer interacts with the students in our community throughout the week and serves as an excellent example for them. Now Deputy Parks has highlighted yet another reason for the importance of having school resource officers in our schools. His training and dedication to his profession has provided a very happy and priceless ending to what would have otherwise been a tragedy that no one should have to face. It is with great honor that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby recognizes Deputy Stephen E. Parks with the highest regard and gratitude for his heroic actions that led to saving a child's life. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And also, because you bond and you called yourself a sheepdog, we had this special cup made for you. Actually, Brad St. Clair made this and it's so appropriate. It reads, "I choose to believe. I believe in the power of a calling. I believe in hope. I believe in the power of will, in justice, in a new day, and in making a difference." I am a sheepdog and very well fitting for you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity to recognize all of our school resource officers. We so value you. We are grateful and thankful for you. And I cannot tell you how proud I am of the Sheriff's Department and all of our deputies and resource officers and how important, what a vital role you play in keeping our kids safe. And I'm very happy of this board and their commitment to keep our citizens safe. And again, we just thank you. Thank you.
While Chair Blevins is coming back to the desk, we can go ahead and move forward to the next item. Thank you guys again for being here this evening. We very much appreciate that. The next item is David Clark with Virginia Department of Transportation for an update. David, if you want to come on up, glad to have you.
Thanks very much. It was a good night to be here. That was very interesting. I had not heard about that one. It's excellent. I'll wait for Ms. Blevins to sit down.
Mr. Clark, good evening.
Good evening. Just a few items of maintenance to talk about, it being January, most of our month, even though we haven't had a lot of measurable winter precipitation. It's been annoying enough that we've had to mobilize and get ready for various kinds of storms, as we did this past weekend, which turned out to be mostly in some parts, but not all parts. And so we did get a big mix kind of thing, and that's what we've been having to deal with quite a bit. In between bouts of that, we have been able to get just a few little maintenance items worked on, in fact, some patching even. Mountain Zion Road in High Top, some in Deer Croft and Alcataba, Yellow Sulphur and some on Keister's Branch. Most of the brush cutting is going on in other parts of our residency and in other counties, but we did get some brush on Merrimack. We've done quite a lot of work on Merrimack, actually. Did some brush cutting on Merrimack and some ditching work. Merrimack does have some challenging drainage out there. Some tree and debris removal, I think that was mostly from storms on Allegheny Springs, Indian Mallie and Drive Alley. And we are still working. The construction project that we've begun is the low-water structure on Taylor Hollow Road, and that continues to go on. And the two or so inches of rain didn't help that, so it's underwater right now. But as soon as that goes down, we can get it pumped around. We'll continue to get that done, and hopefully it'll be done in a couple of months. So that's all I have. We do have a six-year plan public hearing to do in the spring. We have not set that date yet, so we'll work on that. I know we had looked at doing a trip around some of the projects back in the fall.
We need to reschedule that.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to do that before or after the public hearing. We generally don't get a lot of comment at public hearings anymore, but you might want to do that after the public hearing, in which case it might be good to do the public hearing early. So if you want to do that in March, we can set it up. I don't know what your schedule is. I know you like to stay away from the end of the fiscal year too, because there's budget stuff. So it looks like generally March or April is what we're looking at, and I think that's what we did last year. I don't have my notes, so I can't remember which month we did it last year. But we'll work something out, so just look forward to that. We don't have to decide right this second. I'll work with Mr. Meadows to figure out a good date. That's it.
All right, we'll go around the room to see if we have any questions or comments. We'll start off with Supervisor Shepard.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for paving the potholes.
That's all.
Thank you Supervisor Ben.
It struck me with the rain yesterday that at the top of Nellie's Cave, the water goes over the road when it rains a lot. So ditching, when we get to that point, we'll have to look at that. I mean, certainly in the town limits, at the top of Nellie's Cave, serious issues, but even in our part, from our line on, there's several waves of water that cross the road. Also, on Harding Road, I know you all did a lot of potholes, you know, four months ago, six months ago. I think you missed a couple, but hopefully we'll do some ditching on that road too. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Supervisor Demonts.
I don't have any questions tonight, but thank you for being here and thank you for getting us ready for the snow that didn't happen on Sunday.
Thanks.
Supervisor King.
Just a couple of things. I know you come out there on Meta Creek and field some potholes, and there's one right there when you get off Route 8 onto Meta Creek. It's pretty good size, and they missed it. And could you give us some kind of, as many of you talk, could you give us some kind of, on Walton Road, on the curve and all, could you tell the rest of the board?
Yeah, there's been a question about whether there are any improvements. This has come up several times in the past. It hasn't come up lately. But yeah, Walton Road, as it intersects with Route 11, it drops pretty quickly, and therefore there's a couple S-curves in there. To improve anything like that would be almost a relocation, complete relocation. You can't straighten it out because then that drops too quickly. You'd have a very steep drop to Route 11. And then as you intersect with Route 11 at that angle, you almost have to have a flat place to intersect with. It's a difficult situation. There's a big rock in the center of that as well. It's a project that's been, or an idea, there's still no project, but there's still no real request for anything specific. I don't know what would be done, and then the problem becomes funding it. There's no longer any funding in your secondary construction budget for paved roads. There hasn't been for a while. I can't remember the last one we did.
All right.
Deputy Parks, if you'll please come forward. Deputy Parks, I am presenting you a letter of commendation to Deputy Stephen E. Parks, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. Hereby commends Montgomery County School Resource Officer Deputy Stephen E. Parks for his life-saving actions on January 31st, 2023. We, the Montgomery Board of Supervisors, wish to thank Deputy Parks for his immediate response to an incident at Auburn Middle School that resulted in saving a child's life. Due to his quick response by administering the Heimlich maneuver and CPR, a 12-year-old child is with his family today. Our board has always valued public safety in our community. We believe school resource officers serve a significant and worthwhile purpose in our schools. We know each school resource officer interacts with the students in our community throughout the week and serves as an excellent example for them. Now Deputy Parks has highlighted yet another reason for the importance of having school resource officers in our schools. His training and dedication to his profession has provided a very happy and priceless ending to what would have otherwise been a tragedy that no one should have to face. It is with great honor that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby recognizes Deputy Stephen E. Parks with the highest regard and gratitude for his heroic actions that led to saving a child's life. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for the count of words.
You're welcome. And also because you bond and you called yourself a sheepdog, we had this special cup made for you. Actually, Brad St. Clair made this and it's so appropriate. It reads, "I choose to believe. I believe in the power of a calling. I believe in hope. I believe in the power of will, in justice, in a new day, and in making a difference." I am a sheepdog and very well fitting for you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Opportunity to recognize all of our school resource officers. We so much value you. We are grateful and thankful for you. And I cannot tell you how proud I am of the Sheriff's Department and all of our deputies and resource officers and how important, what a vital role you play in keeping our kids safe. And I'm very happy of this board and their commitment to keep our citizens safe. And again, we just thank you. Thank you.
While Chair Blevins is coming back to the desk, we can go ahead and move forward to the next item. Thank you guys again for being here this evening. We very much appreciate that. The next item is David Clark with Virginia Department of Transportation for an update. David, if you want to come on up, glad to have you.
Thanks very much. It was a good night to be here. That was very interesting. I had not heard about that one. It's excellent. I'll wait for Ms. Blevins to sit down.
Mr. Clark, good evening.
Good evening. Just a few items of maintenance to talk about. It being January, most of our month, even though we haven't had a lot of measurable winter precipitation, it's been annoying enough that we've had to mobilize and get ready for various kinds of storms as we did this past weekend, which turned out to be mostly in some parts, but not all parts. And so we did get a big mix kind of thing, and that's what we've been having to deal with quite a bit. In between bouts of that, we have been able to get just a few little maintenance items worked on. In fact, some patching even, Mount Zion Road in High Top, some in Deer Croft and Alcataba, Yellow Sulphur and some on Keister's Branch. Most of the brush cutting is going on in other parts of our residency and in other counties, but we did get some brush on Merrimack. We knew quite a lot of work on Merrimack, actually. Did some brush cutting on Merrimack and some ditching work. Merrimack does have some challenging drainage out there. Some tree and debris removal, I think that was mostly from storms on Allegheny Springs, Indian Mallie and Drive Alley. And we are still working. The construction project that we've begun is the low-water structure on Taylor Hollow Road, and that continues to go on. And the two or so inches of rain didn't help that, so it's underwater right now. But as soon as that goes down, we can get it pumped around. We'll continue to get that done, and hopefully it'll be done in a couple of months. So that's all I have. We do have a six-year plan public hearing to do in the spring. We have not set that date yet, so we'll work on that. I know we had looked at doing a trip around some of the projects back in the fall.
We need to reschedule that.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to do that before or after the public hearing. We generally don't get a lot of comment at public hearings anymore, but you might want to do that after the public hearing, in which case it might be good to do the public hearing early. So if you want to do that in March, we can set it up. I don't know what your schedule is. I know you like to stay away from the end of the fiscal year too, because there's budget stuff. Looks like generally March or April is what we're looking at. I think that's what we did last year. I don't have my notes, but I can't remember which month we did it last year. But we'll work something out, so just look forward to that. We don't have to decide right this second. I'll work with Mr. Meadows to figure out a good date. That's it.
All right, we'll go around the room to see if we have any questions or comments. We'll start off with Supervisor Shepard.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the paving the potholes. That's all.
Thank you Supervisor Ben.
It struck me with the rain yesterday that at the top of Nellie's Cave, the water goes over the road when it rains a lot. So ditching, when we get to that point, we'll have to look at that. I mean, certainly in the town limits at the top of Nellie's Cave, serious issues, but even in our part from our line on, there's several waves of water that cross the road.
Okay.
Also on Harding Road, I know you all did a lot of potholes, you know, four months ago, six months ago. I think you missed a couple, but hopefully we'll do some ditching on that road too. So thank you so much for everything you do.
Sure.
Supervisor Demonts.
I don't have any questions tonight, but thank you for being here and thank you for getting us ready for the snow that didn't happen on Sunday.
Thanks.
Supervisor King.
Just a couple of things. I know you come out there on Meta Creek and field some potholes. And there's one right there when you get off Route 8 onto Meta Creek. It's pretty good size and they missed it. And could you give us some kind of, as many you talk, could you give us some kind of on Walton Road, on the curve and all, could you tell the rest of the board?
Yeah, there's been a question about whether there are any improvements. This has come up several times in the past, hasn't come up lately. But yeah, Walton Road, as it intersects with Route 11, it drops pretty quickly. And therefore, there's a couple S-curves in there. To improve anything like that would be almost a relocation, complete relocation. You can't straighten it out because then that drops too quickly. You'd have a very steep drop to Route 11. And then as you intersect with Route 11 at that angle, you almost have to have a flat place to intersect with. It's a difficult situation. There's a big rock in the center of that as well. It's a project that's been, or an idea, because there's still no project, there's still no real request for anything specific. I don't know what would be done. And then the problem becomes funding it. There's no longer any funding in your secondary construction budget for paved roads. There hasn't been for a while. I can't remember the last one we did paved road improvement. It might have been Price's Fork Road, as a matter of fact. Now, you can apply through smart scale application, but it not being on a major primary route, it would have to qualify in other ways, which means it would have to be a hotspot for accidents or something like that. We just haven't seen a lot of those recently. So, but it's something that we can work with the planning staff here at the county if you wanted to develop an application for that. We did get, and I should have brought this up before, one of the news things that has happened in the last month is out of smart scale. Scores came out and the county did apply for one out at Allegheny Springs Road and Route 11, and that did get approved. It'll be a while as it gets designed and all that, but so that is a way to fund projects where you can't fund them out of your secondary six-year plan. That secondary six-year plan is about 90% earmarked for unpaid roads. So that's why we do the six-year plan. We're mostly looking at, almost all looking at roads like Taylor Hollow and the other ones that we have on there. I can't think of my, what's the one?
Too numerous.
What's the one right there at, right by Sisson and Ryan?
Oh, yeah.
Deacon's with a P. I can't remember.
Yeah, now you got me too.
But anyway.
Poplar Hollow.
Poplar Hollow.
Yes. Yes.
So we got Taylor Hollow and Poplar Hollow, two unpaid roads where a lot of the funding is going there. We don't have them anymore for other things that we'd like to do, which would be some of these very curvy secondary roads like Merrimack Roads, we're working on the ditching because that's a maintenance item. Even with the safety funds that you do get and the telecommunications fee portion of your secondary six-year plan money, it amounts to so little per year that you couldn't do anything large on Walton Road. Anything small would be doable, but that would not be changing the alignment or the grade or anything like that.
Can you widen it by changing the ditching or anything like that?
That would be something you could do like a shoulder, kind of shoulder wedge kind of thing, which is, you'd have to be careful. You can't completely reconstruct it, so you're, as you have curves, you have super elevation in each of the curves, so you're having to follow that or you end up messing up the drainage too. But that would be something. If the issue is people running off the edges, there can be a shoulder, there could be a shoulder wedging type project. And depending on the right of it, because you've got a house right there, and so we'd have to work with, if it were to be widened on that side or it needed to be, we'd work with property owners.
And then if the business owner was willing to contribute to the cost, does that make a difference anywhere as far as options?
It would. In fact, if it was a smart scale project, it would help with the score. There's also revenue sharing, which is a program that we, that's application-based, and that's where VDOT pays for half of it and not through any budget that's administered through my office. It's not secondary construction funds or anything else. That's a fund that is a statewide revenue sharing fund, and VDOT would pay for half the project. And a third, another party would pay for the other part, whether it be the county or through private, it would have to come through the county, but that could be done.
Good. Supervisor Fidzikelski.
Yeah, thanks for coming out, David. I had a couple of requests from citizens. One was for that short paved section of Willis Hollow Road. There's numerous potholes, they're pretty big, but they're not at the beginning of the road. They're really towards the end of the pavement, but it's really fallen into bad shape. The gravel section looks pretty good, but for some reason that, so that would be good to put on your pothole patching list. And also had a request to, and I'm sure this is because of those two inches of rain or whatever we ended up with, the part of Mount Pleasant that didn't get paved is in really bad shape. I don't know if scraping it or maybe needing more gravel in there. And since we were talking about Walton Road, I took a ride up there today myself, and I noticed about a quarter of a mile up, again, all the rain, the runoff probably continued for a couple of days, and it was coming across the road, and it looked, appeared to be a ditch that needed to be cleaned out. It was about a quarter mile up. And do you see any chance that the state would consider increasing that funding for the six-year plan, that money?
Nothing I've seen has indicated that. That was, it was reduced because those are all state funds as opposed to federal funds, and the state funds are trying to be used to maximize the use of federal funds. So a lot of state funds are being gathered together, and have been for years, to get more federal funds because it has to be matched.
Would that be an initiative for VDOT to approach the General Assembly, or is that something that we should take up through?
That would come through the general, through the legislative process. Legislators would propose a bill that would, that could change the formula or find another funding source for secondary funds, for secondary roads.
I appreciate it. Appreciate all your folks' help on these trees that have been dropping down everywhere. So I guess when you have the 30 mile an hour winds and up, plus all that rain, probably be a few more coming down. Thank you.
There's a lot of cleanup today. We'll probably be cleaning up a lot most of this week.
Vice Chair Biggs.
I don't really have any questions, and I want to thank you for being here. And in regards to getting more money from the state, we have talked to our legislators about that continuously, continuously, continuously. So we will keep talking to them about it. It seemed like when the smart scale came along that we got less money than we had before because everyone's competing for it. But we'll keep on advocating.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Clark, first of all, thank you for the speed change signs going up on Route 8 and Route 114 and the warning signs. We appreciate that, and that will help alleviate some of the traffic concerns in those areas. Going back on a statement you just made, talking back again against, about Walton Road and Route 11, you said that recently there hadn't been accidents or a hotspot.
That's the term they refer to as when we start evaluating smart scale projects. We've got accidents mapped. And so when you look at a map of accidents, if you have a lot that are congregating right in one spot, that would, they call that a hotspot of accidents.
Do you know what number?
I'd have to look and see. No, it's, it may be relative even, you know, because there's not as much traffic here as you have, say, in Norman, Virginia or Todd Forest. You look at a map and you see a lot of it out there. So I think it's kind of relative to the area.
Okay. And going back on some of those S-curves and things of improvement, you said that through revenue sharing, that could be an option if we had a private business that wanted to contribute? And that that would be half funding through VDOT?
Yes, it's an application-based process, and I don't know when the next round is. It's usually on the opposite years, it's the smart scale application. So that, the money would have to come through the county, but the county can get that money from whomever they want to.
And do you have any type of estimate when you say a relocation?
No, that's the thing.
Not going to hold you to it, but ballpark figure? So we have an idea?
No.
Like half a million, a million?
At least, yeah. If you're talking about relocation, you know, it's really based on the scope of the project. And I don't know if you're sort of about widening it in place, relocating it completely on new location with new, you have right-of-way issues. Generally, these roads are built in the most convenient places to begin with. So I don't know that another location necessarily is going to be any easier than the one there is right now.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you. Any follow-up? Supervisor Shepard.
I have a couple. I was just sitting here thinking, you were talking about ditching. There's one little place on Long Shop Road, just west, I guess, of Mash Run, and the water's running across the road right there. And it wouldn't take much, you could probably do it with a shovel, but it's just, it's full of mud.
Okay.
And the other thing I was just thinking about, I am now, as most everybody knows, I drive a school bus. My route now goes down into West Hill there on Price's Fork Road. And I come out of there and go west a couple of times a day, and the traffic coming from Blacksburg flies. I mean, it's, I have to stop in that roundabout just to make sure they're not going to just plow straight through because that side is almost straight.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could get that speed limit dropped on that side? Because it's such a short distance. I mean, Blacksburg's 40, and then the other side of that roundabout's 35, and it just seems like that's just a little short section in there. It's 45.
Okay, yeah, I can have them study that, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be good because that's going to get to be a bad situation, especially at nighttime, cars coming out of there going in that direction. Thank you, that's all.
Supervisor Ben.
I was up on the Forest Service Road that you repaired last year or the year before. Not sure if you want to start looking at the potholes that are just beginning to form, but it's such a beautiful road now that, you know, keeping it up might be a good use of time and money.
Okay, yep. Which one? The one?
At the top of?
Not at the county line.
Above Pandapas.
Yeah, Pandapas.
Yeah, going to Giles.
Okay, the one right there at the county?
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? As always, Mr. Clark, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Nice, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Montgomery County Public Schools FY 2023-2024 Budget Presentation.
Thank you, everyone. This is the first time I'm presenting to the Board of Supervisors, so please bear with me if I have a faux pas or do something that's not indicative of what I should be doing in the Commonwealth. It's a little different for me to present this way as I did in New Jersey, so bear with me. First, I want to thank Board Chair Blevins, all the Board of Supervisors, the County Administrator, Mr. Meadows, and the Vice Deputy Administrator, Ms. Hill. This evening, myself and Dr. Whitaker, who is our Deputy Superintendent in charge of operations and all things financial. We're going to present to you what we think tonight is the overview for our budget requests for the next fiscal year, '23-24. Just the first thing we want to go over is just briefly touch upon our mission, our mission statement, what our goal is from the Montgomery County Public Schools. Talk about, a little bit about the error in the calculation tool. You may or may not have heard about that. It changes what some of the state eight numbers are going to look like for the remainder of this year as well as for the next fiscal year. Review some of our budget goals and the aims that we want to achieve over the course of this year. Talk about the superintendent's statement of needs for the next school year, what we reviewed at our school board meeting initially on the 24th and how we had to update that due to the calculation errors. And then talk about our school nutrition program budget as well. I think it's critical whenever we begin talking about school education and requesting funds, whether that be from the state or the local governments and the county governments, it's important to not lose sight of why we're asking for this money. All right? And our mission, I'm not going to read it to you all, but for the Montgomery County Public Schools, is at its core to graduate young people who are capable of being productive citizens, not only in the Commonwealth, not only in the United States, but global citizens where they can remain competitive and have lives that are better than ours and that they're prepared for their futures, you know, and not our past. And in order to do that, it does require some dedication of funds. Recognizing that all of you are the people who are in charge of deciding how much we get, so there has to be a sweet spot somewhere where we make sure that we're being fiscally responsible, but we're also working towards achieving that goal, which I think is laudable and is something we should never lose sight of. When you talk about the Montgomery County Public Schools, I don't think anything captures it better than this picture here. You know, I've only been in the division, geez, I don't know, since December 1st officially, but as I walk these buildings, as I walk this community, everyone, including some of all of you, come up to me and say, hey, you know what? I'm a product of this school system. I've been in the Montgomery County Public Schools 20, 30, 40 years, and there's nothing better. Our teachers are the best, our administrators are the best, our programs are superlative, and everyone has such immense pride in our school system. It's one of the reasons I chose to come here. But it also is because of all of you and the dedication that has occurred, not just this year and last year, but over the time, to structures, to the physical plant, to maintenance, to the salaries, to the staff members, to making sure it's well-staffed. So at the end of the day, you see all those smiling faces of the children, which is ultimately what our goal is. One day I'll figure out how to move this right. But there's no better indication of the Board of Supervisors' commitment to this school division than these three additions right here. And I know some of you were at the dedication ceremonies for the renovations that we had last week. It was so exciting to walk those buildings and see the unbridled enthusiasm of the children in these new places that are now conducive for learning for them, places where they want to go, want to be there and want to show all of us. You know, those of us that were fortunate to go on those tours with the children leading us, where they were so proud of this place that they call their home. And it's really because of the dedication of the Board of Supervisors and putting those funds to make sure those facilities were updated to a point where not only the students, the staff, the administrators are really proud, and the community members. Again, everyone, hey, I went to this school 25 years ago. We had that open classroom, remember? You could hear the guys next door, so on and so forth. And now look at it. Look what my kids are experiencing. It's exciting for me to be a part of it. All right, so I'm going to ask Dr. Whitaker to talk about this part because this is bad news, Dr. Whitaker.
Hey, that's okay. That's somebody's job always, right? So as you are aware, there was an error in the calculation tool that was given to school divisions. So just a little bit of information for you, how that works. On the right-hand side there, you can see the letter from Superintendent Balo. And essentially, she reached out to school divisions and said that there was an error in the calculation tool that they had provided, just to tell you about what that tool is. So each year, we get a number of them as we go through the budget process. And based upon the budget that is pushed forward, it tells us how much money we get from different funding streams. And then we build our budget based upon those numbers that we are given. We take those calc tools and that's what we use to move forward. Locality does not have the ability to check if the math is correct on those tools because we don't have all the formulas, and we don't have all the numbers that live in the background of this calculation tool. So we take those numbers and we move forward with that and establish our budget. It is important for you to know that while we're not sure exactly what that correction will be, everything that's giving us indication to this point is telling us that for this year's current funding, there is a plan to make sure that we don't lose funds. However, we need to move forward under the assumption that things are as we've been told until such time we are given the answer of how those funds will be provided. So tonight, you're going to see two things. One is the original budget that we built prior to when this letter came out, and the second is the updated based upon the new numbers and what that would look like for us. So you can see on the left-hand side of this, there is a template that has two numbers highlighted in yellow. The number on the left-hand side, 511,000, is the amount that we will be short in the current year that we are in right now. Again, that is the amount that we are being told will be corrected, but we do not have how that will happen yet. So we're going to continue to proceed as we are until we know for sure where those funds are going to come from. The right-hand column is the amount that, we got our original calc tool, and then the letter came out, and it was 1.26 million less than the original calculation tool that we were given. I'm sorry, the new tool is now, this calculation came out to give us the math of how to estimate how much lower it would be than what the original numbers we were given were. Are there any questions on that section?
Supervisor Ben?
So the basic A is lower. And then if you just jump to A minus D, I'm assuming, I mean, clearly it's a million off.
The columns aren't side to side. So the first column that has FY 22, 23, everything below that's for that year. So we're below for this year that amount. The column beside it, it's kind of apples to oranges because they're two different complete set of.
But is the 28 million, 28, 8 million for? But are, is the, um, twenty-eight million, twenty-eight eight million for this fiscal year going to be flat moving forward, plus the five eleven, or?
As of right now, it is the number minus five, uh, correct? Is that correct? No, it's that the top number. I apologize.
Say that again.
You're saying as of this moment, what is it?
What they, what they say that they're going to do.
Yes, they will take it back to that top number.
Okay, so the top number goes down from this fiscal year to next fiscal year in the order of three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am, based on.
They're not saying that that's going to stay flat.
We have not been told that about next year. Right now, they've only been working on corrections to the current year that we are in. Um, and that they would they would correct that. I have seen different things. You know, there's a lot of discussion going on um, of what will happen moving forward, but the conversations we've heard to this point are about correcting the current year's budget and that they'll address the the future after they fix this.
Okay, thank you.
Am I missing? All right.
All right, so what are our goals that we try to accomplish with this year's twenty-three, twenty-four budget? The first one is to continuing to ensure that our our we are able to maintain the high caliber and high quality programs that we currently have. And that they're aligned with our stra- our strategic plan. The next one we want to do is we want to support the student athletes and some of their safety needs that we've talked about it at our, uh, Board of Education meetings that we have a plan, um, with a provider where we contract out, but they're unable to to satisfy the requirements of that agreement. And a lot of times our our athletic games in our high schools, more than half the time go uncovered by athletic trainers. So what we'd like to propose is adding four uh, athletic trainers, one for each for high school, so we'll have somebody there permanently on a full-time basis. Support the mental health needs of our, um, students as well as identified in the strategic plan. You know, one of the things we've, I'm sure everyone's heard about and has been aware of, some of the socio-emotional learning needs as well as mental health needs for our students as we emerge, um, from the pandemic. And to help meet some of those needs, we're proposing proposing to add two additional counselors or clinical practitioners to provide supportive services to our students. We want to increase access to preschool, you know, particularly at the Auburn Elementary School. There aren't a lot of resources down there for families that have, uh, high caliber preschool. We have the capacity, we have the space, and we do believe there is a need for that as well. We're proposing increasing the pay for all of our employees according to the, um, state guidelines for the SOQ positions. And some of the state funding, which we hope, um, will be increased because we're able to do this and we have to adhere to that five percent increase. Uh, if we don't do that, we will lose some of the proposed increases in state aid. So we're proposing to do that as well. Five percent raise and it up to our one percent retention bonus. Again, a lot of the increase, proposed increase in state aid is related to making sure we we do that for our public employees. I'm also learning that a lot of times what I hear from Richmond is very similar from what I used to hear from Trenton. Take that for whatever it means. The salary corrections for individual staff, as identified in the salary guide, we found that some of the people on our salary guides are not appropriately placed or not, um, where they should be according to their years of experience, and some of those corrections we'd like to make as well. And for administrative assistants, you know, they've been placed on guides where they were given one-year experience for every two years of practice. We'd like to correct that and make that one for one. We're finding that we're having a lot of difficulty hiring people for our non-certificated programs. And we, it's just not cost-effective for them to work for us. Some of them are getting jobs where they can make more money at, you know, local convenience stores. And, uh, we want to be competitive, but we also want to make sure that we can provide the service to our students. Custodial staff needs to be increased. We've increased some renovations and building space and square footage. We have to also increase our ability to maintain and clean those spaces as well. As a result, we would recommend hiring four full-time custodians and address the needs of our self-funded health insurance account. And I I'm aware, I think, that the, um, the county is self-funded as well. I think we kind of share, um, some of that that cost, I believe. I don't know that intimately well yet. But I do know that we underbudgeted for our self-insured, uh, medical and health and prescription insurance for our employees for a couple of years now. And that we had a reserve fund that we're using to pay the ongoing costs. And anybody knows if you keep doing that, that reserve fund's going to go to zero. And what we budgeted per employee per month, um, doesn't meet what the claims are. We'll talk a little bit about that more briefly in one of the next slides. It's a significant amount, though. And then just to increase some of our overall supplies, as well as, you know, gas and other things that are going up because of inflation, as all of you can attest to. You know, when I moved down here in December, gas was thirty cents cheaper a gallon in Virginia than New Jersey. I don't know what happened, but now it's ten cents more. Yeah, it must have. Do you want to talk about this, Dr. Whitaker?
So as Dr. Dr. Bragan mentioned, we are in our self-insured insurance. And for those who aren't aware, what you do is you you pay your money into that self-insured account and you pay your claims directly out of it. Um, and so, you know, you are still participating in a program where you have copays and things like that. It's just those claims get paid out of your self-funded account. And so as you can see here, this gives a a view of what that self-accounted, self-funded account balance looks like. And you can see we've been going down year after year. So we have to address that and put some money back into that self-funded account. The next slide provides for you a projection. So this is pretending that we continue along the path that we are on. You can see here that the green at the bottom, that is our average employee premium. So that's pretty consistent from year to year. It hasn't really changed. Our employee premier, um, our employee, I'm sorry, employer premiums, you can tell about the same. It stayed right about the same year after year. The red line is the claims paid. And so while we've maintained the other two pretty level, our claims have continued to go up. Um, and so this is a projection that if we continue the way that we are, you'll see in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year what that would look like. If we put funds into that that account, it would look a little bit more, again, this is a projection, but it'd look a little bit more like this. And so, you know, you are supposed to keep several months' balance at all times, and we really need to get back to a place where we are able to do that. So as you see it moving forward, there is a significant, um, amount of our requests that would be going to that self-insured account.
Now you're giving me the bad news?
I just looked to see if you wanted to come up.
So as you can see, there's two different slides there. There's two different projections there. One is, um, the superintendent needs as presented at our board meeting on the twenty-fourth, which when you look at the total budget all in, and the the amount we would need to fund and the amount we would request, uh, from the Board of Supervisors was, uh, four point eight million or thereabouts. And then if you look at it with the increase, uh, that's added because of the error in the calculation or projected for next year of the one point two six increase, the request from the Board of Supervisors comes down to six point one million on the bottom there. I'll talk briefly about this and Dr. Whitaker, please, please fill in if I I mess anything up. This is basically an overview of, you know, what the budget is and what we're looking at. If you look at last year's all the way on the right on the blue line, all in at the end of the year is a hundred and thirty-two million, thereabouts. And if you look on the bottom, on that pink one, all in is about a hundred and thirty-eight million. And some of the increases that you'll find are are listed there. The health insurance increase is two point six million, as we said. That's to fund our health insurance on about what the per employee per month cost would be. We were significantly underfunding that. That's a bit of an increase for the employee, too. I think it was a six percent increase for their, what their costs were. And then the other one is if we do the, uh, the salary enhancements, that comes out to a little over five million dollars. Um, that's listed there as well. Um, the ESRS positions, there's been some positions that were funded due to the CARES Act monies, and that that money is obviously rapidly dwindling. So some of those positions we do think are still valuable, and that's why we have that increase there of two hundred fifty thousand to fund, um, I think it was four of those positions we had moving forward. The classified salary adjustments, we talked about those those staff that are underfunded and not paid appropriately for what their level, years of experience are. And then the additional personnel is that we saw on the ask, the staff members that we needed to to add to it. Then you have the nine hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, as I call that breakage, but that's in from retirements and differences in salary as we move forward. And then we, inflation of all our other costs at five hundred sixty-seven thousand. Roughly that brings us up to the hundred and thirty-eight million dollars in the cost. Did I miss anything, Dr. Whitaker? I'm going to go with school nutrition.
Uh, and as you're all aware, our school nutrition budget is a separate budget from the school operating budget. And so we provided for you lastly there an overview. We did give you an estimate of the meal rates. We haven't gotten the official calculations yet that were given. Uh, but this is our calculation there for those increases. One thing of note that you might see is you're seeing our our purchase services going up and our personnel going down. And that is because we have a third party, um, who we use, the nutrition group. And so as employees leave Montgomery County Public Schools, then the the nutrition group hires in a new employee. So that purchase service goes up as the internal employee costs go down.
What did you do?
I broke it.
That that question, that concludes our presentation. And obviously at this point, any questions and things we could maybe answer?
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. We'll go around the room to see if supervisors have any questions. We'll start off with Supervisor Ben.
Welcome, Superintendent. Happy that you're here. And thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for being here, too, and all the hard work that you put together, uh, this presentation. I'd like to go through the presentation, uh, starting on the overview of goals. That you're asking for mental health counselors. Uh, NRVCS provides counseling. Um, so what are these counselors going to do that NRVCS isn't able to do?
I'll answer then, and you could fill in. You know, the, uh, the thing, the support counselors that we do get from the NRVCS are good. And we're grateful for all the support that they provide us. And it's not enough, though. It's simply not enough. And we, I've spoken to the, uh, point people there. I don't remember their names specifically, so I apologize for that. But I've asked, can we get more? Can we get more support? They can't find people to do it. They, they're literally, you know, if they had it, they would try to give it to us, even if they had the resources. I don't know that they do or not, but they don't have the people to in order to do that. So our thought was that if we hired some people full-time, we'd be able to accomplish that need. I don't know that. I don't know that they're definitely there, but I have heard, again, from this area, I'm new to Southwest Virginia, is that people would be more apt to work for a full-time position if they were able to have it, as opposed to being, I don't want to say farmed out, that may not be the right term, but working for an agency where they then put you in different places for shorter periods of time. I don't know that to be the case, but that's what I've been told then.
Um, so where do the two additional school counselors go?
Exactly the position. I believe they were elementary, but I don't remember where off the top of my head. I could find that for you.
Um, I don't think we determined exactly where. What we want to do is look at, um, where our highest need is. Look at the student numbers at that time and then look to where that highest need is. I think, you know, when we work as well, Miss Ben, with partner agencies, it really is an excellent addition for us. But they do sometimes have different rules than we do about how many people they can work with, how quick and available they can be. You know, if someone is a full-time staff member, they are able to work with any child who needs them, and you have to be on a case management, have paperwork completed, have a whole lot of different things done. So that on-the-spot crisis response isn't quite the same because you have to already be through an approved program with the individuals if they come from the outside. So that is one benefit to having additional individuals who are full-time staff for us.
And then, um, I knew about the five percent raise for all all employees. For some reason, I I missed the one percent retention bonus. I know that we have to come up with half for the raises. Do we have to come up with half for half for the one percent?
Um, so there's actually two things of note. One is you may have heard in the news this this week them talking about seven percent now. We don't have enough new information to do anything with, but that's just something to throw out there for you, is that was a new discussion in the last five days or so? Um, we don't have enough information on that or the one percent yet to know. Sometimes they roll it out and then they tell us how to do it later. So we just don't know enough on that one percent retention bonus. Our understanding is they were supposed to be hired in this year and stay through next year. Is that correct yet, Katie?
The original verbiage that was in there was that you had to be hired in this fiscal year and sign a new contract and stay for next fiscal year. We're also seeing some changes in the language from the, um, crossover bills where it's a thousand dollars and not the one percent, but the language originally also said up to one percent. So at this point, we're waiting for new language.
They, so they didn't have any funding, uh, specified for that one percent, like it had to come from, some part of it had to come from the county?
A follow-up question said that we could distribute that entire amount across all of the positions that we had. But typically what we've been able to do is match it with other funds.
Okay.
And there is some match to it.
Okay, thank you. Um, if we go to the self-insurance fund balance chart, please? Bar chart. Not that one, the next one, please. The one with the green, yeah.
It's just hard to drive from here.
There you go. What did you say was the right amount? Is there an ideal amount? Of reserve fund?
It's probably listed on the next one there.
Okay.
And if you look at. If you, if you look at the per employee per cost per month, right, if you look at what we're funding, it's roughly almost nine hundred dollars per employee per month for all the health, medical costs. That's the green bar. It goes up to the top there. And that's been fairly consistent, I would say, from twenty nineteen. And the employee contribution has been the same, and so pretty much has been the employer contribution. The red line is the claims. Now, if we were not self-insured and we were going out to a broker, with that kind of, um, claims rate, you know, they want your claims to be eighty-five percent of what your premium is, we would have paid significantly more per employee per month. So I again, I I don't know what happened in the past. I I can't go back in time. But we were underfunded for what our actual claim utilization was. So we met with our our broker and we talked about it, and you know, they do the actuary numbers and they come back to you. They said the appropriate fund should be over a thousand dollars per employee per month, which is what that last green line is. And if we do that, if you see on the bottom blue line, that gives, um, the reserve account starts, stops shrinking and holds steady at the two million dollars. And over time, you actually want to increase that if you can. Self-insured is a tricky business because at some point, when you go to the doctor as an employee, you we have to pay it no matter what. I budget five hundred dollars and the claims are fifteen hundred. Nobody cares. They have to be paid. So I think, again, I know it's a big ask. It was two point eight million dollars or so all in. With a little increase in employee contribution, it comes to two point six million. But if we don't fund that appropriately, there's going to be a time where we're going to have to take money from teachers, from classrooms, because you cannot not pay that. We're the the difference between being self-funded and all, you know this because you do that already, and being funded through premiums through a provider, is that we're we're bearing the risk, right? We we cut out that middleman so they don't make that couple million dollars of profit, but we cannot not do that. And again, and credit to Dr. Whitaker and the team as we got through and peeled back the layers of the the onion with the numbers. It's disturbing. Um, and you know, we we did this where I came from, too, and we were a much bigger district for our costs. We were in the low forty-two, forty-three million dollars a year. But you have to plan that accordingly. And, um, we're we're deficit spending. And other than the federal government, I'm not sure anyone is allowed to do that.
So we all went through a pandemic. Clearly, um, claims went up. Your graphs show that. But we're not in the pandemic anymore, and your red line actually does look like it's coming down. Is that like the norm to be expected? Is that common, uh, across the United States at this point?
I would say for us, it's a projection right now based upon exactly the information you're sharing, right? We saw people not going to the physician and then an increase in individuals who were going and, you know, you see more because you didn't go. So we feel like we're going to be, um, you know, looking like things are a little better, but we didn't want to skew it too much. So again, it is a projection, but we won't, none of us have really been out of this before. So there's nothing really to compare it to.
Thank you. Uh, there's a slide called Updated Requests Reflecting VDOE Error.
Yes.
Which one?
That one you were just on?
Yeah, you mentioned one point two million. Yeah, you mentioned 1.2 million. I missed the relevance of the 1.2 million.
So if you look on the left-hand side, the yellow on that chart says 4.84. On the right, it moves it to 6.1. That's where that 1.268, you add those two numbers together, that's your increase from the 4.8 to the 6.1.
Okay. Then your slide called Funding Request. The additional personnel. What is that? Like, who are the additional personnel?
Those are the individuals from the goals chief, the trainers, the four trainers, the two counselors, the four custodians are the additional staff.
Okay. Can you go back to the other slide, the funding request? Or, I'm sorry, go to school nutrition, please. You said that as you lose employees, then you hire contract services or purchase services, but they're not really offset. It went from 2.6 to 3.5, while the salaries went from 1.4, just down 300,000 versus up 900,000.
Yeah, it's not going to be an exact, because there's other things in purchase services, so there's a lot of different things that would be included in that cost. It's just one of the reasons that you see that shift there. But not everything in purchase services is staff.
So that change of 900,000 is 30% or more? What other things are you incurring that are...
Purchase services?
Yeah. That would have gone up actually 20% because you have to take out the 300,000 of the salaries, which would be a wash.
So a big piece of that is the commodities, right? Everything is more expensive? So a big increase is going to be in those. Think how much more expensive it is for you to just go to the grocery store and buy some things.
Not 20%.
I don't know the exact, go ahead. You can come up.
Can you give an example of what's 20% up? No?
I can't off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing that would change is the purchase of maintenance services for some equipment. So it's a combination of all three things.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Demonts.
I have just a couple of follow-up questions. First, I'm really happy, actually, I could have used this information about the education era. I was giving a talk recently and was kind of caught flat-footed. It was right after this news came out, and I hadn't heard about it. And so I was kind of like, okay, I'm not really sure, but I'll investigate that. I know that that probably kind of gave you great pause when it came through. I appreciate how clear you've been in showing us what has happened and the math on how we got there, so thank you for that. For the additional preschool class at Auburn, will that not require an additional employee as well?
It will.
It will?
Yeah.
And then, does every school have at least one school counselor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Wonderful, I'm glad to hear that, because that's very important. And then the final question that I have is about the school nutrition fund. That's the income, the revenue is matching the expenses, is that by design?
Yes.
Okay. Can we kind of expect that going forward, for those two to match? Or just looking historically, it looks like occasionally there's some differences?
Our hope would be that it becomes to be a fund that is making money. That is the goal with bringing in the outside agency, is because they can do things a little differently than we can do as a school division. You know, they run this as a business in many different places. So that is the hope, is that it actually begins to bring in money. You know, right now, it's difficult with repairs. You've got to find somewhere to buy an oven. We, you know, we write grants, we try to get those things, but, you know, that equipment's very expensive. So our hope would be that they're going to continue to bring in revenue for us. That was the plan from the beginning, and then the pandemic hit. And so they really were stuck in the middle of that, but really were great partners for us through the pandemic and helping us feed all the kids.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both for being here. This is really good information, I appreciate receiving it.
Supervisor King.
Thank you both for being here. Supervisor Bone asked several of my questions, but once I go through all these high figures, I'll have more. Thank you.
Okay.
Supervisor Fidzikelski.
I didn't see anywhere in there purchase of any buses. Are you replacing any buses this year? And where would that be in the budget?
We typically use year-end money to purchase buses, is the way that we have typically budgeted for them. We have purchased buses already in this school year, and then what we would do is look at where we are at the end, determine our year-end needs, but typically that's how we do buses.
Is there any plan to add more electric buses?
Not at this time. What we are doing is we have four buses, one in each of our communities, and what we feel is most appropriate thing to do is gauge how they're going. I think, I think there might be one or two on the road right now. So they're requiring more repair than what we had anticipated. We really want to see what that life looks like on the electric bus before we put more funds behind it, so we thought we would use the four that we have, gauge their service, gauge how long they're lasting. It's a different, it's a different thing when you don't know, when you get on a bus, how many miles you're going to go, depending on the cold or the hills. And so we try to keep those routes, our shorter routes, because we're not seeing quite the time on a route that we would like to see. So that's our plan for right now.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard.
I believe a lot of things have been covered that I wanted to ask, so I don't have any questions, but I appreciate you guys being here.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Thank you both for being here. I just had a couple things. On the salary and the bonus, that 5% and the 1%, they would be for the next fiscal year. They would not be spread out over a two-year period. It's for the next year. And then the other thing, well, there are two things. On the state funding era, I think all of us were pretty upset about that, and we continue to lobby our legislators to make sure that it can be a hold harmless situation, because, you know, we were all told one thing, and then all of a sudden, it's another. So we'll continue to do that. On the health claims, do you all have like any kind of wellness program? Like I was, I don't know really why the claims have gone up, you know, that's something that, you know, varies from situation to situation. But is there any kind of like wellness plan for the employees to maybe help in a preventive sort of way?
We do have a wellness plan. What I will tell you is it probably looks a little different than yours. Like you all have a nurse practitioner, and you're able to do your shots and everybody, which doesn't come through your pool. We don't, we don't have the ability to do that. We did study it several years ago, but it was going to be, I think, between $5 and $6 million for us to do that and have more than one location. I think that's a really good, you know, component of that preventative help, is having someone on staff who does that. So we do not have that piece. We do each year do wellness incentives, and so those are by volunteer, you know, you can't force people to participate. But we try multiple times per year to do wellness programs, and those are geared at educating our staff as well as promoting more movement. However, I'm not sure that it has a direct impact on our, on our claims. I think it's a lot of times the same people doing them. You know, I sign up, I don't always finish the challenge personally. So that is an area that, you know, that we could try to do a little bit more in.
Okay, thank you.
Just on that, Supervisor Biggs, I think that there's a couple areas when you're self-insured, that you have a lot of flexibility in how you move forward with your program. One is to incentivize preventative care. You know, there's five major illnesses that speak to almost all of our claims, from heart disease, diabetes, obesity. And if we proactively work with our employees to manage that in the early stages or in the beginning stages, when we do these health clinics and health fairs, and identify people that are at risk before they become high claimants, we can definitely do that. And that requires us to work together with our employees, and I know we've started doing some of those things, like incentivize going to gyms and things like that. But there's larger biometric information that we could work with our employees to do and help them move forward. And the other piece, as Dr. Whitaker mentioned, was creating our own health centers and working some plans like that, and maybe partnering with the county, or coming up with different options and different plans, because regardless of who's providing your insurance, when you go to the provider, they're going to bill at the Medicare rate, right, for a wellness visit, for a internal medicine visit, it may call, they may bill us $275, we pay back 175. Where if we had our own doctors, our own chiropractors, where we had access to, even if it wasn't a dedicated, isolated standalone facility, it would significantly reduce costs over time. So I think as we get more acclimated to the numbers, as we're kind of just in the beginning stages of that now, we will come up with more of those ideas that will hopefully keep that line, that red line, continue to go down.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Dr. Whitaker and Dr. Bragan, again, thank you for the presentation and being here tonight. I had just a few questions or comments. Going back on the electric buses, and I know you said that right now you don't have it, you've got the four, and if there's carryover money for transportation to replace buses, does that include, those fundings include the charging stations?
When you're saying the funding?
For your, the grant money for the, for the four electric buses?
You're saying money that we've already applied for, does it include those?
Yes.
Do you know, I don't know the exact answer off the top of my head. My memory tells me yes, part of what we're getting back from the DEQ is for the chargers. Ms. Miano, do you know? Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. And then, so for additional employees, you're looking at a total of 11, is that correct? Four for positions, four for the athletic trainers, four counselors, I'm sorry, four custodians, two counselors, and then the one preschool teacher.
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Right. So 11 total new positions.
I would just want to double-check on the preschool program, because I'm not sure that includes a paraprofessional or two. Let me give you that exact number, so I don't want to commit to that, but I will get that to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow.
Certainly, thank you. And then going back on the reserves for the self-funded insurance, you said right now that you're, you guys are dipping into your reserves, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The reserves are declining as of, it was 1.9 million where it started in 2019 at 4.7, and if we continue to do that, we will be below 1 million at next year's for the reserve account.
Can you go back to the prior slide? So what is the, what do you typically keep in the reserve?
Well, that's a really great question. In having the conversation with our brokers who manage our claims, and they speak to what the trends are as far as not only medical, but prescription as well, and prescription is a significant amount of that cost, as I'm sure you guys are aware. They say about two and a half months' worth of claims, right? So our claims right now are over $1 million a month, so we would want to have that, if you're asking me, the safe spot for me is around $3 million right now.
Okay, yeah, okay. Very good. That's all the questions I have right now. Do we have any follow-up from supervisors? Well, thank you both for being here. I'm sure we will, this will just be the beginning as we dive into it deeper and have further discussion, but we do appreciate you both being here tonight to present for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can just add one thing as well for Dr. Bragan and folks, there's already been more communication back and forth with the schools over the budget this year than there's been in the past several years, and on behalf of the county, we really appreciate that, because working together, we'll figure it out.
That's excellent.
Thank you.
Very glad to hear that as well. All right. Public address. This is a time for our citizens to come forward, thank you. On issues deserving of their attention, a public sign-up sheet was available outside the meeting. I will first call the names on the sign-up sheet, and then after we go through that list, any citizen that would like to address the board may do so. Each citizen will have four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair or the board of supervisors from the front lectern. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Acceptable etiquette is not to applaud or make loud responses. When you come forward, you'll need to state your name and address. You'll have four minutes. When the yellow light starts blinking, that is your one-minute warning, and of course, the red means that your time is up. The first on our list is a Mike Myers. I'm sorry, let me go back. Angela Stanton. Angela first. And then next will be Will Stanton.
Good evening, my name is Angela Stanton, I'm in 2595 Spalding Road in Christiansburg. The extended landfill resides in an area designated as a resource stewardship, defined by the county as a place to help landowners achieve objectives for their property without harming the existing ecosystem or negatively affecting neighbors. The proposed SUP does not do this. In a report to the planning commission in December, staff analysts stated that concerns remained regarding the length of time for the operation, noise, et cetera, related to the proposed site. The original SUP for a small inert fill on approximately three acres of an existing 124-acre parcel, what's proposed is no longer a small site. Nothing's been provided to date to show you the true need for this landfill, other than it's convenient for new river recycling. Why would there be a need for this if most of the material was recycled? Mr. Phillips said to this body last year that only 10% of the materials were recycled, and at our last meeting, he said he was under no obligation to recycle at all. Do you know how big a million cubic yards is? A cubic yard is three by three by three feet. A million cubic yards end to end is 568 miles in length, the distance from Christiansburg to Panama City, Florida. If you build a structure the size of a football field, 4,000 cubic yards at a time, and stacked until all 1 million cubic yards were present, that would be 250 stacks, three feet high, resulting in a structure 750 feet high. That's equivalent to a 58-story building, which you see there, the picture of One Penn Plaza in New York. This is not an insignificant amount of rubble they want to dump. The amount of rubble will destroy Berenger Mountain, and no reclamation will make it right. At our last Board of Supervisors meeting, the planning commission completely discounted the noise issue. The noise from the loud beeping and clanging, along with the sound of materials being dumped, plus the noise from other equipment remaining on site, is very real. In April's meeting, public safety was discussed as a major concern, and nothing has changed in the past 10 months. Four or more dump trucks going in and out of the property for the next 40 years will increase the probability of accidents. The county is also likely to continue to grow, increasing the number of cars and trucks on roads that are ill-suited for them. The most challenging place on Walton is the sharp turn and steep descent from Route 11, and it's an accident waiting to happen. And you've been told not to worry, that there are only six accidents during the past few years on this portion of Walton, but this facility wasn't in operation during most of that time, so what's happened really is of little consequence now. Keep in mind, those are reported accidents. Also, if you look closely at the map, there's a portion of Walton just past the facility with many accidents, and the worst spot is near the intersection of Route 11 and Walton Road. This is a picture that was taken late last Thursday afternoon at about 4:45 in the afternoon. You'll see there are two trucks very close to each other who had left the facility, and another you can't see because they were behind our vehicle. This is what we're seeing, and this is at a time when we're only told 10 to 15 trucks are visiting the facility each day. So you see here a picture of what was discussed a little earlier by your VDOT rep. You see the S curve, and you see a straightening out of it. It could be done, and as he told you, it's going to be done at significant cost, and the $100,000 that Mr. Phillips claimed he would donate is not going to be half that amount. And, you know, keep in mind, while the construction's happening, this road's going to be closed, the intersection's going to be busy. The bottom line is, it's not on the six-year plan. I just want to say harm's going to be caused by this landfill for the noise, the increased traffic, and decreased values. And we really hope you see, the county growth has gone significantly in the last 40 years. The needs of the county are different today, they'll be different 40 years from now. The decisions you make matter, and I hope you're going to be good stewards of the county and your constituents and deny the special use permit. Thank you.
Will Stanton, and then Mike Myers.
My name is Will Stanton. I live at 2595 Spalding Road in Christiansburg. When I was reading over the minutes from this last meeting you had, I was surprised to see some comments made by Mr. Brian Rice, a member of the Planning Commission. He wrote, and I quote, "I realize there will be two or three homes that will be negatively affected if this SUP is approved." He goes on to say, "It is uncomfortable for the board to make decisions that negatively affect someone. But the needs of the entire county are important and should be considered when making the decision." Sounds to me like Mr. Rice has no problem in sacrificing three homes and the lives of people living in it for the landfill. But Mr. Rice got it wrong. There are not just three homes that are near the landfill. There are 23 properties that are close enough to hear what's going on, to see what's going on. So it's not just the three. If approved, you are giving permission to Mr. Phillips to negatively impact the value of all our properties and negatively impact our lives for 11 hours a day, six days a week, for the next 40 years. That's not an insignificant amount of time. But the number negatively affected is greater than that. There are hundreds of cars on Route 11 every day, and according to the SUP, when fully operating, there could be another 30 to 40 trucks entering and 30, 40 trucks exiting to do the fill. But there are also trucks going in and coming out with dirt and shale. So it's somewhere 60 to 80, 80 to 100. I'm not saying that dump trucks cause accidents. What I am saying is the dump trucks, 28 feet in length and weighing a whole lot, they're going to cause more congestion, and the place that's going to cause a lot of the congestion is right there where 11 and Walton meet. And just showed you that particular site, that we were in our vehicle, seeing two trucks in front of us and one truck behind me. I tell you, when I do go around that turn, if I see a truck in front, and I've already seen a truck coming behind me, I get a little nervous because a heavy-loaded truck, not being able to see who's in front of it, could be a problem. So I hope that we're not also sacrificing our harm, or sacrificing our lives for that as well. This operation's also diminished, already diminished the lives throughout the sounds of dump trucks. I don't know if you think about the sound they make when they're backing up, that piercing beeping, you can't mistake that. You can hear it for a very long distance. And when they're dumping the stone, the concrete, it makes lots of noise. And the noise they're making is not in the M1 site, is not in the manufacturing site. I've heard so many times that Mr. Phillips can do this by right. If he does it in the manufacturing site, by right. But when it's in an A1, a stewardship area, there's no by right there. In 2005, my wife and I bought our, what we thought was going to be our forever home, on 78 acres, wooded acres, which now joins Mr. Phillips' property. We have hosted delegates from delegations from all around the world in that house. We have raised kids and grandkids in that house, and everyone's ever comes there on our upper deck, looks down the valley to Plum Creek, and thinks what a wonderful place it is, and it truly is that. I never thought I would be told that our lives and property, and the lives and property of our neighbors, are of such little value that all of us could be sacrificed for a landfill. We all pay taxes in Montgomery County. We all support the economic development in Montgomery County. We all help for the prosperity of Montgomery County. I hope that when you consider this, you think about, this is being asked for us to put up with 11 hours a day, six days a week, for the next 40 years. That just doesn't seem right. So I hope that you deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Myers, and then Bob McLeod.
I'm Mike Myers. My address is 2977 Spalding Road. I'm probably one of the closest houses to the property. First, I want to start, Mr. King, you did remove yourself from voting for this because you did take money from Bobby for your campaign. So I believe everybody feels that way. I was opposed against this. I've changed my mind. Reason for it is because of, he doesn't get this passed, he's going to pin it on automotive junkyard. I work in automotive field. I have a collision repair shop. I know the chemicals, gas, fuel, oil, all of that. I don't want to see the property, the ground, have those chemicals in it, especially with my house being there. So I'd rather have the rubble landfill there than I would automotive junkyard. If you do approve it, I think that you should put stipulations on it. He did state that he was going to have equipment there for the recycling. I did talk to Bobby tonight. He does have a grinder there where he's been grinding some concrete, and he's looking at purchasing one. So I think if you do approve it, you should make it a mandate that he does have the equipment to do the recycling, and as long as he recycles the biggest majority of it, like he said he was going to do, which was 90% recycle, 10% bearing it. At that point in time, I'm for it. It's probably going to make some of my neighbors mad that I'm for it, but I'd rather that than an automotive junkyard, not backyard. So just put stipulations on it's what I'm asking. Make sure he gets the equipment and bides by the rules and regulations. A lot of people doesn't understand the businesses that can go inside of an industrial zoning. My business is in the industrial. I can't be in a B3 or any kind of business district. I have to be in that because of the chemicals that we use for automotive refinishing. We deal with oil, antifreeze, thinners, paints. So I'm looking at building a new building myself for my business to expand. Part of it is the area. I've got to go in front of the board too, to have it approved, to be able to build that building. Some of the questions that I was asked is the chemicals. And I was also told what businesses can be inside of an industrial zoning, and he actually has the right to have those businesses inside industrial zoning. So he's not in the wrong, he is in the right. So, but there needs to be just direction on what equipment he puts in there, and that he does do the recycling, that it's not just going to bring stuff in and dump it in the holes covered up, carry the good dirt out, and leave all the junk in there, and then plant grass and put trees. Just regulate how he does it and what he does with it. And other than that, I'm for it, okay? Thank you.
Bob McLeod, and then I have Barbara Devini.
Good evening. I'm Robert McLeod. I live at 746 Switchback Road. And I'm here at this meeting because I've heard a lot of questions asked, and I've got some of my own. In addition to all the safety issues and noise testimonies that we've heard in previous meetings, none of which have been affirmatively addressed, I question if we, the community, are not trying to act proactively rather than reactively, especially in regards to possible accidents. Are we not trying to avoid possible problems rather than add to those problems, which is what do? At a previous meeting, I heard the chairman say that when she was addition school resource officers, and her feeling on the safety there, doesn't that reinforce our feelings about the number of accidents? It's not the number of accidents. That's not a good representation as to the danger which we're presenting here, as evidenced by those pictures. I have attended many of these meetings, and since its inception, have heard the same concerns over and over and over again, but I haven't heard any answers. The property values have dropped, the noise still exists, the safety is still a big issue, and the quality of life is negatively affected. People moved here to enjoy safety, beauty, and a great location to raise a family and enjoy retirement. We are not aiming, are we not aiming at those goals? I have heard in the March meeting, as stated by Mr. Neal, that the site will be monitored by an onsite manager who will monitor everything coming and going. I question, what training does the manager have? What education does he have to monitor possible hazardous materials that are being brought in? I question if he logs the trucks and loads, and if he does log those, are they public record? Obviously, he has a problem counting vehicles, as testified, because 10 is not even close, not even in the morning. I see where the December meeting, under the environmental, it says FEMA has determined that the area does not involve wetlands or jurisdictional streams. But I question whether the underground streams and the waters that are supplying many wells in that area are affected by leaching from the site to the surrounding areas. Once that water is poisoned, it's poisoned forever. Under the section of stewardship, I wonder what clear cutting of an area would do for the erosion problems and the water which was mentioned previously. And that I'm running short of time. I ask the board to consider your vote seriously, as to whether it affects the safety, peace, and economic situation of the properties surrounding this application.
Barbara Devini, and then Larry Vaughn.
Good evening. Barbara Devini, 1267 Snapdragon Lane, Christiansburg. I live across Walton Road from the entrance to the landfill site. As members of the Board of Supervisors, you are asked to make weighty decisions that affect the futures of the citizens and land of this county. I hope that you will consider this perspective of members of the Walton Road community in making your decision. There is community opposition to the existence of this landfill and to expanding the landfill. If you approve the landfill expansion, then it is likely that the debris deposited there would remain forever, which makes this a very big decision. The current operations are already driving out wildlife, according to my neighbors who live on Spalding Road. Filling the hollows with debris will change the flow of the rainwater, and there has not been a hydrological study to assess how the changes in water flow will affect the potential for flooding in the homes in the Lithia Springs area. Meanwhile, the increased truck traffic is already damaging the nearby roads. As members of this community, we treasure the land where we have our homes, and that is the key thing. These are our homes. The Planning Department's presentation referred to the closest home to the landfill as a double-wide, and it isn't clear that this was simply a descriptive term. According to the website, censusreporter.org, 10% of the housing units in our county are mobile homes. And I hope that the residents of mobile homes deserve the same right to peaceful enjoyment of their homes as residents of other types of housing. However, the landfill would be only 75 feet from this property, and will bring potentially decades' worth of slamming truck gates to disrupt the peace in our rural part of the county. Although in earlier meetings, it was noted that there are dump trucks with soft-closing gates, the dump truck companies in our area don't seem to have them, and so dump trucks with slamming gates will be what is used at this site. Do we want to be a county where people have to worry that a landfill will be built next to their homes? Living next to a landfill means losing value in our homes. Meanwhile, putting 18 times more volume of rubble landfill in those hollows means a huge increase in the number of dump trucks on Walton Road. As you know, the last SUP was rejected by the Board of Supervisors due to serious concerns about the traffic hazards presented to the MCPS bus route 84 on Walton Road. We have the opportunity to look ahead and avoid a tragedy by not increasing the potential for a dump truck to crash into a school bus. And you, the members of the Board of Supervisors, considered this a grave risk when you were considering the earlier SUP. Nothing has changed in this safety profile, except to increase the landfill and the amount of truck traffic that would occur. If this were your mother or father's homes, or if these were your child or grandchildren on the MCPS bus, would you take the chance that a heavily-loaded truck would crash into a school bus? Please vote to protect our children and our land. Meanwhile, I think it is a false choice to propose that it would be having a landfill versus having an automotive graveyard. The SUP for the automotive graveyard has expired, and Mr. Phillips no longer has the right to use the M1 property in that way. Thank you.
Larry Vaughn, and then after that, Alice Williams.
Larry Vaughn, 1267 Snapdragon Lane in Christiansburg. The applicant has taken great pains to associate the SUP with a recycling operation. The currently-approved SUP, being used right now, has no requirements tying it to recycling, and what was the consequence? A claim of 90% recycling, will do that, give us the permit, they got it. A year later, they're recycling 10%, and they're asking for 34 acres more. There is no connection to the current SUP application to a recycling commitment, none whatsoever. You've read the ordinance certainly, more than once probably. You see, there is not a single word about recycling in the ordinance. Mr. Phillips himself, meeting last month, correctly stated, "I'm not under any obligation to recycle one pound." Now, that's not his full quote. He said, "But I try to." Okay, but how hard is he going to try? A good recycling business is a low-margin business. You can make money dumping it in a hole, and this ordinance requires absolutely no recycling, and he said it himself last month, and that is true. There is also essentially no recycling infrastructure on the construction pads where the shale is being excavated. I'll pass those pictures around. You can see them from Google Earth. Looked at them from Saturday. A portable building, a porta potty, and some heavy machinery, which you definitely need, but there's no scale, there's no sorting building, there's nothing. There's no substantial recycling going on now, and that's why that current site is filling up so quickly. This ordinance was written in a way that is worthless to this community. It's essentially worthless to the interests of the county, but it is priceless to Mr. Phillips because it imposes no meaningful obligations whatsoever. He will have permission to run a dump for the next 40 years with essentially no strings attached. There have been intentional omissions and misdirections in this application. We'll review them quickly. I talked about them last month. There is absolutely no information on the closeness of these activities to the house. Donna Robinet has been suffering next to where the current fill is. Two more hollows will be filled in next to her. Mr. Dickens, Mr. Nester, we receive no information about the expansion into the Lithia Springs watershed. And as you may recall, Mr. Neal said last April, he wouldn't be talking about moving into that area because it would move into a possible jurisdictional stream. I read that quote. I've got it right here. Silence since they asked to move into that stream. That's not appropriate. There should be a discussion, not silence about this. The open space stipulation that they put in the presentation isn't in the permit. There's nothing in the ordinance about it, and it doesn't mean anything legally. There's nothing that means conserved open space that is an obligation, and it's not a requirement in the ordinance as it is written. There's a whole paragraph that claims that there will be construction during LEFON. We know that's not happening. Most importantly, and I'll pass this around as well, the stipulation that was added for the left turn only means nothing. I talked to Mr. Clark. It's unenforceable. They proposed it, the applicant proposed it. It doesn't mean anything. We even got agreement. We even got agreement from Mr. Phillips', project manager, who infiltrated one of our private meetings that we had with Mr. King, and he even nodded in agreement when we said that was not enforceable. Now, of course, his presence creates an apparent conflict of interest that is a problem, and that's already been discussed a little bit. Hope you will abstain from this vote. I'll pass that around. Please vote no on this.
Thank you. Alice Williams.
My name is Alice Williams. I live at 2664 Radford Road. I can see the entrance to Walton Road from my property. And I'm not as eloquent as the rest of our speakers. I don't have the numbers, the figures, the fancy maps. All I can tell you is that it is dangerous. You don't need to be an expert in anything to realize that it's dangerous. You can't put those big trucks on there with our families, our children that are just learning to drive. My child drives a little Mazda Miata. We got it because it's efficient on gas and small enough that hopefully she can't get in trouble with it. But has she been run off the road? Yes. Is that considered an accident? Yes. That's not in your tallies over the accidents off of that road and the traffic because of it. I had a friend visiting who was one of my husband's employees. There was debris from one of the trucks, and I'm assuming he didn't see it blow out of his truck, but it did. And this gentleman just had liability insurance, because that's all he had to have, and his vehicle was practically totaled because there was no recourse for him for having insurance for something that was in the road, because that's considered a collision versus what's called a comprehensive claim. If the thing had hit him versus it stopping still and him having to run over it, it's two different things. So therefore, he was out of pocket, a lot of money for this vehicle, which got him to and from work, which was part of my husband's business, to have the employees there. So once again, something has happened that has directly affected the community. My children are there. I'm there. I don't know if my children will be there after I'm gone. Probably not. They're going to nest and just probably leave me. But these folks are going to be there permanently. Is this damage going to be there permanently? Lithia Springs is not the only waterway through there. There are so many underground springs that run through there that my whole property turns into practically a marsh right now. You really can't drive anywhere on the property because of the amount of water that's in there. So my home has a sump pump. Why does it have that sump pump? Because all of the water that's flowing underneath the ground. So is there going to be a leaching problem with contaminants in the water? You betcha. There are going to be contaminants in people who have wells through there? You betcha. So there's a whole lot of stuff going on there that anybody with common sense can see. We don't have to be a Ph.D. I don't know how to do a slideshow for you to show you the common sense part of it. So many people are extremely book-sense, but not a whole lot of people have a lot of really good common sense. So I hope the common sense for everyone overrides all decisions and vote this proposal down. Thank you for your time. You're welcome. Nice evening.
Thank you. That completes the sign-up sheet. But if any citizen would like to come forward and address the board, you'll have four minutes to do so. State your name and your address.
My name is Joshua Simkins. I live at 1905 Martin Avenue in Radford, Virginia. And while these other folks have expressed a lot of concerns about noise and that kind of thing, I can't speak to that. But I can speak to the fact that I'm a school bus driver from Montgomery County, and I've been driving a school bus for probably about 35 years, and about 15 of it was on that bus route they're talking about, bus 84 on Walton Road. So I'm real familiar with the area. And it's with, when you meet big trucks on Walton Road and the curves that are there, and there are some blind curves, especially the one that's right near Route 11. And so far, they've talked about trucks that are going from Route 11 up to the landfill. But with a long-term deal, who knows where those trucks will be coming from? Maybe they'd be coming down from the Blacksburg side through Walton Road, from Price's Fork Road, and from Radford Road to Price's Fork Road, not Price's Fork, I'm sorry, Route 114, which is Pepper's Ferry Road. There are five, I mean, blind curves where you really don't see the trucks or whoever you're meeting until you're in the curve. And if you can imagine a loaded truck or a large truck in a school bus on some of these curves, and I've driven it, and so I know there's not a lot of room. And so my real concern about all this is the safety of our children on those school buses. I drive a different route now, but I've driven that, drove that one for years, and I know that, well, my concern is safety, and I hope that when you guys make your decision, that you will take the safety of our children who are on those buses that have to share the road with those large trucks. I hope you'll take that in consideration also. And so I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time?
Thank you. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. Hope everyone's doing well. You know, at the last meeting, it looks like there was about $6 million of extra money the county is collecting or will be collecting this year. And so I have a 2020 Hyundai Elantra, and my taxes just for, was $400 bucks just to carry, just to drive my Hyundai Elantra in Montgomery County in Christiansburg. My water bill typically is $110 a month. This month it's $175. I don't know why. And the heat, my heat almost doubled, and I own my, and my increased usage was only up 10%. So what I'm trying to say is, money, the tax money you guys have collected is our money. It's not money to be, to spend and not to spend unwisely. And we just saw the school budget. They're asking for a $6 million increase, okay? That means the cost of students to teach a child at our school is going to go from $13,500 child to $14,500 child. No new students, okay? But we're going to spend another $1,000 per child. M C P S is proposing four ESER positions. Where and why? Don't know. I thought COVID was over, okay? I thought ESER was all about COVID, okay? Now, we've got to have additional counselors for emotional needs for elementary kids, for our kids, for our babies, because the school board had them wearing masks, kept them out of school for a year and a half. So, you know, now we're still paying for COVID. Where's the COVID money at? They keep on, you know, we're always going to live behind that cost. Why? Okay? You know, Florida didn't have, you know, they didn't close schools down. We, you know, we have to be wiser with our money, and they already spent three times more on Christiansburg than what they needed to. So, you know, so anyways, I'm asking the school board to spend the money wisely and hold the school, hold M C P S accountable for how they're using their money. We shouldn't be increasing their budget. It should be decreasing. We have two schools that operate at 70% capacity, and we want to spend more per student, and it should be decreasing instead of increasing. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Donna Robinet. I live in the double-wide that is right beside all the recycling or non-recycling business that's going on. I have my front deck will be facing this new 34 acres, and if he's allowed to have that, I mean, that's, I have no quality of life there. I mean, I'd have to listen to that all the time. I mean, I do now, but it would be even more than I have to listen to now. And it's not a quiet thing. Those trucks are loud, and they start at 7:30 in the morning, and in the summer, they're till 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. So, I mean, I just don't know what else to say. I feel like I'm deflated, you know? I'm just one little person against a man who's got tons of money. Me and my husband has worked our butts off to have our place, and we just want peace and quiet, and that's all I ask.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Yes, sir.
I'm Ken Farrar. Address 1800 White Oak Lane. I'm the pastor of Mount Taping and Methodist Church, which is just past the entrance of Walton Road to the landfill. I worked and recently retired from Virginia Tech, 43 years in facilities. My job as an administrator was to take care of data, room building information, analyze it, and everywhere it was involved throughout the university, I was part of that. And it was a wonderful job, because I got to know so much. I was also, am also, was also a bivocational pastor, because I wanted to work with people even more. So I went to Duke, did my seminary work, and become pastor. I've been pastoring for 20-some years now. One of the ministries I have is with people, forming communities, people of all kinds, of all backgrounds, and putting them together to work for the common good of everybody. I think that's your job too, here in Montgomery County. In our communities, our biggest resource is not money. It's not big houses. It's not wealthy constituents. It's not profitable businesses. All those are big tax-paying entities. But our most important resource are people, all people from all walks of life. To have a thriving community, we must dwell on the most important part, component, people. One recent community over the last year or two has been the Walton Road community. You've heard from a lot of them tonight. We work together. We don't all agree. If we did, something's wrong. But we work together. At last Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Todd King asked us if he could meet with us because he had some information to share. So we said yes, and we set up a meeting. Mr. King came. He told us that Mr. Phillips was planning on timbering the land and putting in an auto graveyard if he did not get his S U P approved. Well, that kind of puts us between steel and concrete. What do you do? What do you do? And we felt like our supervisor was trying to sway us rather than remain impartial. Not only that, we had an uninvited guest who came to our private gathering, and our planning director confirmed that it was a private gathering. He refused to identify himself or why he was there. He recorded or transmitted our meeting to somebody. We could only guess who. We later found out who he was and that he is a project manager for Mr. Phillips. I ask that Mr. King that you abstain. You abstain for one thing you had, and there's nothing wrong with it. You accepted a $3,000 donation, campaign donation from Mr. Phillips. There's nothing wrong with that, but it does impact your votes. And we ask you abstain because of our meeting and what we perceived from that. By the way, we followed up on the graveyard and found out that that agreement had lapsed because it has been two years and that that will have to go through another approval process by you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Neal. I'm an engineer with Forsight Design Services. I just wanted to note a few points to you tonight and try to bring some, a little bit of clarity here. Number one, there is a need for this in Montgomery County, a tremendous need. Mr. Phillips would not be proposing this if there was not people there that needed a site for both recycling and inert field to find a place to go. All the construction that we've seen over throughout Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County, and everywhere shows us that need. It is there. Number two, the location is very central in Montgomery County and accessible to lots of things. Both, the location is ideal from a geographic standpoint, from the location geographically, but also topographically as well. This site does set itself up for an inert field site as needed. Number three, the data that you all saw at the last presentation, and I think that's one of the things that you must rely on when you're making decisions as a board member, is the data that is available. And the data is that there's very minimal traffic impacts and accidents on Walton Road in this area. And I showed that to you in those slides that I've seen at the last presentation. Number, number four, or number five, or, I'm sorry, number four, I'm going to put number five into number four. As you saw in the presentation, there are small sites that are opened up. So we're only opening up and putting in small areas, four acres at a time, four to five acres at a time, and filling that up. And we cannot open up a new site until we replant and reforest that existing site. So it is not like you're going to have the entire area opened up and nonstop trucks all the time. Number, number five, we do have and worked with, and we did on the existing site, both the D E Q and the Corps of Engineers, and we have an environmental consultant that will go through to identify jurisdictional areas and things like that. We did that on the last one. I didn't talk about that because it's a matter, of course, of going through our permitting. I don't think I need to describe every minutia detail to you all on that point, but we do do that, even though there's some claims that we are skipping that or things like that. We're certainly not doing that. And we did go through that process with the existing fill site, and we'll go through that process with this fill site through the actual erosion control permit. And then it is absolutely in Mr. Phillips' best interest to recycle everything that comes onto that site, if it can be recycled. There is nothing to be gained from putting something that can be reused from an economic standpoint by Mr. Phillips can be reused in the site. And then last but not least, your county staff, the people that you trust the most, went through the entire analysis and recommended approval of the S U P. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public address. Do we have an addendum?
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. And next up, items of consent.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. Fiskowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. DeMott?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
At this time, we'll take a 10-minute break.[1749.88]
Okay, buddy, we're ready. Okay, we're ready to get back started, start it back. Old Business, Special Use Permit Amendment, Indigo Road Investments, Rubble Landfill.
Motion?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Does the board members have any questions? Ms. Hopkins.
Is she here?
She is.
I do.
I do. Ms. Hopkins, would you come forward if you can help us?
I do have just one.
I don't know where I wrote my stuff down. Good evening.
Evening. If, if in the future, if we were to approve this, and in the future, the property change hands, do they have to go through an S U P, or is this one?
The S U P, the S U P would stay with the property.
Property.
So it would follow the property, but they would be under the same conditions of the S U P if you were to approve it with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Demonts.
Can you, um, address what we've heard from some of our public comments tonight about, um, the land being timbered or turned into an auto graveyard if the S U P is not approved?
So currently, the, for an automobile graveyard, you have to have a special use permit, and it has to be, believe in A1 or manufacturing zoning district. So they would have to come to you for that special use permit. The approval that they had was for the manufacturing M1 district, and that's where the S U P existed for the automobile graveyard. Because that use has ceased to exist on the property, and we have a site plan for the entirety of that property that does not show the automobile graveyard, that they have already started to develop into the recycling center, that S U P is void. So they would have to come back for an automobile graveyard. Now, as far as timbering, that is a by right use in the A1 zoning district. Um, so they would just have to get any permits through Environmental Services.
Can you tell us other by rights in A1?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I mean, of course, agricultural, um, even intensive agricultural to some extent is allowed by right. They can do fire and rescue stations, schools, I'm operating off memory, um, single-family dwellings, of course, are allowed by right. Trying to think of any others. A vet clinic is allowed by right, that's always the strangest one to me. Parks, unlit, that's about all I can think of off the top of my head. Probably the most impactful would be the intensive agricultural.
What does that mean?
Um, it can mean a lot of things. So, for instance, True Harvest Farms is considered an intensive agricultural operation, and they do processing out there. They, because it is the ag product, but it's secondary to their growing. It, it can mean up to a lot of animals. The units, the animal units get much bigger, so we're talking things that you see in other areas such as long, um, chicken houses, or turkeys, or, or things like that. So it, it can be a much more intensive use than just your standard farm.
But in order to do an auto graveyard, there would have to be a whole nother S U P process.
Correct, at this point, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have questions?
Ms. Hop, Ms. Hopkins, uh, Hopkins, um, so by right, you just went over those possible things without any coming for, in front of this board?
Correct.
And so if they wanted to do the automotive graveyard, they could, the applicant could come back, and we would go through another S U P?
Yes, ma'am.
Hearing. And if the applicant decided to timber all of that land, there would be no sound barrier, no, uh, buffer for noise?
No, ma'am. They would just have to comply with any Department of Forestry permitting, and then permits through our Environmental Services Department, but it would be an administrative approval, it's nothing that would come before this board.
And so they would not need any provisions on operation hours?
No, ma'am. Not with us. I do not know if any of the other, like, forestry permits have certain hours of regulation, but we would not.
And they could do that, it, there's no, like, time limit, like, they can't start and stop, or it would just be at the applicant's decision or how he?
Correct. There might be certain months of the year that they couldn't do it, because I know that that area has one of the endangered bats, and so during roosting season, they can't clear trees from that property, but other than those limitations, there would not be any.
And that would mean increase on trucks, logging trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other supervisor, Bone?
Um, I want to talk about the, um, the stream that a lot of the people reference. Could you explain that?
So currently, they have a Virginia, a general permit, Virginia water permit, um, that is issued, that goes through D E Q, and then they have to get the permit, and it's filed with us as part of their erosion sediment control and stormwater permitting. They do have that permit for the first phase. Generally, how that works is the engineer, when they're developing their site plans, they do a survey, and then they submit that to D E Q for review, and then D E Q determines whether or not they need that permit. Um, the engineer has indicated they have surveyed the area, and they will not need those permits, um, but they'll have to submit that to D E Q at the time of site plan.
And so whichever stream that they were referencing, it, it's not an issue as far as D E Q knows at this point in time?
Correct, correct.
And then, um?
And their permit is good through March of 2026, I believe.
And, um, some reference, um, contamination of karst or water tables and things like that, but inert landfill won't contaminate anything.
No, ma'am, that is the point of it being inert landfill, it's clean field, so it's dirt, brick, block, um, it doesn't have things like sheet rock, metal piping, that, those type of things are not part of that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts.
Just one follow-up, um, I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. The Planning Commission recommended denial of the S U P by a vote of six to two with one abstention, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the M1 means, is that meaning a S U P for any of those? That could be, anything that could be on M1, or are you saying just for the automotive graveyard?
Um, for the automotive graveyard, there are other M1 uses allowed by right on that piece of property. I would probably have to look that up, but I know it's things like assembling of electronic devices, um, various manufacturing, automobile, um, like, assembly, things like that, all of that is allowed by right in M1. Um, so that's on the adjoining piece of property. This piece of property is zoned A1, and so, yes, it, most of those other uses would have to come back to you.
Anyone else have any questions, or Ms. Hopkins? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, um, add my perspective of this, um, even though it is inconvenient, and several folks talked about that, uh, we've already passed a S U P for the first site, and because this site is being done in phases, there won't be multiple sites, they're not opening up the whole 34 acres at one time. So I don't really see where an increase in traffic would occur. Also, the fact that, as we were talking about inert material, it's, it's right in the, right in the paperwork that we got. Inert waste is brick, concrete, block, broken concrete, and uncontaminated minerals or soil. Inert waste is physically, chemically, and biologically stable from further degradation and considered to be non-reactive, and includes fragmented solid material such as rock, concrete, broken bricks, and block. I know in the past, we heard, uh, somebody say that it was, it was not going to be good for our landfills to be filled up with this material when it can be disposed of properly. I am not really concerned about the landfill getting full. Our, uh, agreement through, uh, the Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority, and their agreement through New River Resource Authority, I, I'm not concerned about the landfill getting filled. But I am concerned about people dumping it somewhere where you don't want it. And when you live out in rural areas of this county, you see it all the time. People will either dump trash or construction materials, most of the time, it's not inert material, it's mixed material. That mixed material here can go right to our, um, transfer station. So I'm not really concerned about the transfer station being affected, they should still continue to get the amount of tonnage that they normally would get. But I am concerned that without having a lo, a, a local place where this can be disposed of properly, um, that we're going to see dumping in, in areas that we don't want it, because it occurs now. So, um, I think that this increase in the, um, acreage is almost a, an, a non-argument, because it is going to be done in phases, so nothing there is going to change. As far as accidents, um, I live in Allegheny, Allegheny Springs Road is not a very nice road, and we have constant dump truck traffic going up and down it every day, and, yeah, accidents can happen, but that's between the drivers, that's not, um, let's sit around and wait for it, um, because it may never happen. And I think the accident data that we saw is, kind of gives us a clear picture of what's going on there, so, um, uh, I, 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 I don't see no reason not to approve this, but that's my comment.
Any further, uh, supervisor, then?
Um, so where I live, um, is not far from the Blacksburg Country Club, so it's right over the town line from Blacksburg, and my neighbors constantly hear the Hokey Stone, quarry, a blasting shakes their houses, they hear the trucks. And so, uh, over the last week, as, you know, getting ready for this vote, I re, I realized it was a very similar situation, um, in some ways. And, uh, all that we've done, that we could do, was work with, um, the Virginia Tech Foundation to limit the number of hours, um, and, um, more of a community meeting, like I think Supervisor King was trying to facilitate, uh, or be part of with the group here, um, because we all know practically nobody has any control over Virginia Tech Foundation or Virginia Tech, so, you know, that's the only way about going about to, to make it at least bearable for our neighbors. It's not ideal, uh, but, um, I'd like to make sure also that through District A, when the pipeline was hot and heavy coming through District A, um, the residents were able to get VDOT to put up signs that had, you know, the red, uh, slash through trucks or tractor-trailers being able to go down Mount Tabor, um, in several different places, and I'd like to, if this is passed, I'd like to see if VDOT can, um, take care of that on the switchback side of, of this area, because those signs are so unusual, as opposed to the signs that say, have the weight limits. And so I think, uh, at least for the pipeline, the trucks did obey, you know, not going through, um, whatever you call that, um, no-through trucks, you know? And then, uh, lastly, widening the road isn't going to solve, you know, if we can get that to happen, isn't going to solve the problem, but it will help. So I hope that, um, if this passes, that that's pursued also. That's all I have, thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Um, I'm going to vote no, because I still have the concerns about the safety of the road, the noise, and the traffic.
Mr. Demonts?
No.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Abstain.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Four ayes, two no, one abstain.
New Business, Support Extension of the Rail, Rail, Virginia Rail Heritage Region.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up, Montgomery County Public Schools Supplemental Appropriation.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Report, we'll hop on over to County Administrator?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Oh, wow.
In, in honor of Marty not being here, I'll just keep it moving tonight.
You took his place, didn't you?
That doesn't mean I'm not going, that I won't have some emails this week, but I have nothing this evening, that's it.
What about our Deputy Administrator, Mrs. Hill?
They report.
They report, okay. Then we'll go to the supervisors, we'll start off, I think, Ms. Demonts?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, I have just a couple of things. One is, I want to make all of you aware of an opportunity through our Parks and Rec Department to participate in the New River Valley Senior Games. This information is also available on the Parks and Recreation website, and calling them Senior Games is a bit of a misnomer, because it's for anybody 50 and up. So beginners are welcome, um, this is one of the Parks and Rec Department's favorite activities, you can go talk.
What are you looking at me for?
I'm looking at Steve, I'm looking at Steve. Um, it includes things like, um, horseshoes, mini golf, pickleball, uh, rifle race, shuffleboard, softball, um, there's all kinds of different events, and it's interesting, because it moves from county to county, we're partnering with several other localities to put on the senior games, so you'll have seniors from all over the region, excuse me, people over the age of 50, which is not a senior. But please do, if you're interested in participating in one game or all of them, Montgomery County is the host county this year, so, uh, they're really hoping to get the numbers up to pre-pandemic levels, and, um, I have it on good authority that Mitchell Hawk will be at Bocce Ball, if anybody wants to participate in that event in particular, tell them I said hello. Another Parks and Rec related, um, just for y'alls information-type piece, um, I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that Montgomery County Parks and Rec Basketball Program, um, is at full capacity, we have no ability to create extra teams, so we're at the point now where we're at capacity and could potentially be turning away children that might want to play. The reason that we're at capacity is because of gym space, um, there just are not adequate facilities to host all of the children that want to play, and so what ends up happening is they get a couple of practices in, and then they go into games, and the teams don't have an opportunity to practice, which is something that's very important if you're, you know, a five-year-old trying to learn how to play basketball, the ability to practice with your team, um, you know, is pretty critical to being able to develop that, um, athletic skill. So just for Parks and Rec planning needs, and just so the board is aware, um, that is really, we've hit a wall in Parks and Rec with basketball, um, where we just are at capacity. That's all I've got, thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I had a very nice meeting, uh, with the Ruritans down in Shawsville last week, it was, uh, very interesting, um, wish Mr. Clark was here, because the two biggest questions were, where's my broadband, and when are you going to pave my road? So, uh, I really hope that, uh, we can set a date for our road viewers tour, uh, because there's several of them that, uh, I need to take and show you. That's all I got.
All right, Supervisor King.
Just a couple of things, I know during y'all's liaison meetings in the towns, and I think it's either Raffert brought up about getting together and discussing your, uh, what we give budgeted to nonprofits and everything, like, for us to set something up with everybody, so we ain't, each one of us is not divvying up. I know how, you know, it works and all, it, everybody gets together and says this, but if we can reach out to our other localities as a board, and just sit down, and so we're not putting money somewhere where we could use it somewhere else?
I think we're.
That would be good.
We're go, we're going to get in, we're going to get information out, uh, the joint budget review was, uh, 31st, I believe it was about two weeks ago, so we're going to get that out ahead of the budget, so you'll have some numbers to start looking at, and, the towns did not participate in that, am I correct, and that Angie I?
Yes, that's correct, the town managers asked us to send them the submissions from the outside agencies, and we did that, but they, they, we invited them, they chose not to participate.
But will we know what they're contributing, or, and what, or what the ask is, I guess we won't know until they vote on it, but?
That's correct, we, we will know, the information that we have that we can share shows the asks for all the communities.
And if there are, um, agencies that have a, it's not certain how they'll get funded, we usually reach out to the admin, to the staff and ask them what the recommendation will be, so obviously, like you said, we won't know what's approved, but we usually do know what the recommendations are.
Very good.
Thank you. And, uh, like I say, congratulations to Christiansburg Fire, Sunday morning, they won a chili cook-off. They got magic dust in their stuff. That's what was said, but, uh, and we're getting, we're getting really close to, I know school's still in, but, you know, I think school starts, what, July or August? We need to have a sit-down discussion about these S O R officers.
There'll be more to come on that in the budget message in two weeks, for sure, yes.
Supervisor?
Yeah, S O R. Yeah, yeah, School Resource Officers, there you go.
Oh goodness, all right, Supervisor Bone?
Uh, Supervisor Demonts, A A R P starts at 50. Yeah, well, I'm still not happy with it either. Um, the only other question I have, and I couldn't send an email, but I know soon our meetings will be weekly, when do we get that scheduled?
We can send that to you, I think it was at the end of one of the budget presentations that we made earlier, but we can mail, email that to you.
That'd be great. Thank you, that's all.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Yeah, I was shocked when I got the letter from A A R P at 50 myself. No report.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Uh, just the two things I think I wrote you about, um, the open house at Christiansburg Primary School was last Wednesday, and, um, Chair Blevins and I were able to attend that, and then on Thursday was Christiansburg Elementary School, and it was, both of them were really, really exciting, um, the kids were excited, the teachers were excited, they did wonders with both buildings, and, um, it was interesting, at Christiansburg Elementary School, the, the night of the open house, they were also having, um, a parent-student activity time, so there were kids and parents all over the place, um, really enjoying the, the new facility, so if you haven't had a chance to go, please take a chance to go. I, I, I think you'll find that it's unbelievable, what they, what they were able to do, and that's it.
Very good. Um, just wanted to, uh, this past week, they, R S V P had their bingo fundraiser, and it was a huge success, and I was proud to see so many of our county employees there to, uh, support that, all the, the fundraising goes towards, um, activities, uh, that are put on by R S V P for the community, so that's a great resource, and it was a lot of fun playing bingo. Again, congratulation, congratulations to Christiansburg Fire Department for their chilly, uh, win, I saw that on Sunday, that was great for our area. Again, want to thank Deputy Parks for his dedication, it was so nice to be able to do the letter of com, commendation for him, and again, for the support, um, and great value that this, this family, I call you all family, this board puts with our, uh, School Resource Officers. And we will have the budget on our presentation, two weeks from now, February the 27th.
And, and that will be a regular board meeting night, so we'll, uh, start at 7:15, like we usually do, we will not start at 6:00, as we've done in years past, so the regular meeting, we, we may have closed session, I don't know that yet, but, um, that will be the first item at our regular meeting, so that'll be a, that'll be a busy night.
Very good, and I just wanted to say, um, I appreciate all of the speakers during public address, um, these are challenging decisions that this entire board has to make, and it's, it, you have, we have a commission that they give an advisory, then we have staff, and then the board, and I appreciate everyone, there's lots to consider when we look at the full impact and all the data, and I do, and there's lots of challenges when we make these decisions, so I appreciate, uh, everyone's thoughtfulness and, and thinking about the impacts that it will make. And with that being said, we stand adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry!
Take that back.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Yeah, I totally forgot this, I, I came into this meeting wanting to talk about it and forgot about it. I heard from a citizen tonight that, uh, 82 years old, um, he has been getting the elderly,
Tax relief for the elderly.
Yeah, tax break, whatever. And now, since his house has been reappraised, and went up considerably, um, he can't get it. And I was just wondering if there's any way to make adjustments for that.
Don't we vote on that every year?
Not every year, um, when the economy was fairly stable, we did not vote, bring it to you every year, we'll look into that, though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's good, though.
All right, now we're adjourned, thank you all.